Good evening, I want to welcome you and call order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, September 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present, myself, Joel Odom, Ms. Liana Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bonner Reed, Mr. Steven Shawrock, Mr. Marshall Fleer, and Mr. Craig Boots. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been newly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Mr. Savoda will now lead us in prayer, so let's stand together, followed by Ms. Martinez, leading us to the questions.
Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day of life and remembrance. Lord, we ask you to be with the families that lost loved ones on this anniversary of September 11th, and to never forget those who gave their lives on this day 22 years ago. I ask you to be with those who are fighting for and continue to protect our country. We thank you for a successful start to this new school year, and we pray that you be with our students to guide them in making good decisions each and every day of their lives. We ask you to be with us this evening, with the board, administration, and special guests here tonight, to help guide us in making the best possible decisions for our schools and students. And Lord, we ask you to be with us tonight on our journey home to keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement. The FISD vision statement is, character, knowledge, competence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to the development of innovative, lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success. Ms. Reed will now recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, and strategic resource management.
We will now do a round robin as we recite our FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcome, partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, aptible individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders.
And Mr. Shawrock will now recite our open view of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month for the code of ethics, we are highlighting the trustworthiness and stewardship. I will be decadalable to the public by representing the district's policies, programs, priorities, and progress accurately. I will be responsible to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities. Our good governance indicator for the month is, the board monitors strategic plan implementation and district success in a formal, scheduled manner.
Now, Ms. Pecree, do we have any public comments? All right, now we have some recognitions for Florisville's ISD's Student and Teacher of the Month, Dr. Gilstrap.
Yes, this month we have our Teacher and Students of the Month from Florisville North Elementary, so Ms. Brooks, if you would please come forward. Turn the podium over to you.
Good evening, I would like to call Ms. Kalsavich, get Liana and Ezra to come up Good evening, School Board, President Odom and Dr. Gilstrap. I'm honored to be here tonight to present to you the first Students and Teacher of the Month for the 23-24 school year. FNE would like to recognize STEM teacher Nikki Kalsavich for our Teacher of the Month. Ms. Kalsavich joined our campus just last year and has certainly become part of the FNE fabric. She has a Bachelor in Arts in EC6 General Education, a Master's in Arts Education with an emphasis in leadership, and a National Award Certification in Art. Ms. Kalsavich said, "Teaching STEM is a natural evolution for me, as I've always loved science and integrating technology while also encouraging the creative process that encompasses engineering and design. I want students to explore and see how creativity and STEM are a part of everyday life." One of her students said, "I always look forward to going to STEM because I get to be creative and solve problems." Ms. Kalsavich helps us to learn about the world around us and different cultures and how they build stuff in their countries. Ms. Kalsavich planned our first-ever STEM night last spring, during which parents and students were able to complete a variety of STEM tasks and challenges. She also hosts a STEM booth at Ice Cream Social to give visitors an opportunity to program their own robots. Her colleagues say she goes above and beyond to create a positive learning environment where her students feel comfortable experimenting, making mistakes, and learning from them. And Nikki is an amazing, compassionate, and kind human who encourages her students to think outside the box. One of Ms. Kalsavich's favorite quotes is, "I am who I am not yet," because she believes we can always become a better version of ourselves by learning through our experiences and by being aware of ourselves and environments. FNE is thankful to have Ms. Kalsavich to give our students a hands-on, creative, social approach to learning. So I happily present to you Ms. Kalsavich, Teacher of the Month. FNE would also like to recognize Liana Fuentes as our first Student of the Month. She is joined tonight by her parents, Chrissy and German Fuentes, and her grandparents. Liana is a top-notch student who strives for excellence each and every day. She currently serves as Secretary for our Capturing Kids' Hearts Junior Caring Crew and participates in Gifted and Talented. As an avid volleyball fan, you may also see her at Jaguar volleyball games or playing at Hills Gym for the Laverne Rocks. In the spring, she also plays softball for the Laverne Bears. When not playing with her team, she enjoys going outside to play sports with her family. FNE staff describes her as, quote, "A natural leader who is smart as a whip," and says, "This girl is going places." Liana's peers say she's smart, kind, and fun, and that she challenges them to do their best. In the future, she plans to attend Baylor University and would eventually like to be a lawyer. She says she may follow in her mom's footsteps at St. Mary's for her law degree. Congratulations to our Student of the Month, 5th grader Liana Fuentes. FNE would also like to recognize Ezra Flores as the second Student of the Month. He is joined tonight by his parents, Erasimo and Juanita Flores. Ezra is a 5th grade dual-language student who participates in GT and serves as historian for our Junior Caring Crew. He's also been a page for the Peanut Festival Court and participates in activities as a member of the Catholic Church in Pope. In his free time, he likes to play video games, spend time with family, and play basketball or soccer. His teacher said, "Ezra is an example of a great student and leader. He comes to school with a positive attitude, is respectful to everyone, and puts his best effort in all that he does." His peers say that he is always kind to them, helps others to be kind, and knows a lot about video games. Perhaps fittingly, Ezra plans to work in cybersecurity when he is older because he wants to stop hackers from getting into things they shouldn't. Congratulations to our Student of the Month, 5th grader Ezra Flores.
Ms. Kalsavich, I just want to say, first of all, congratulations on Teacher of the Month. Thank you for everything that you do for our students. Not even that, just getting the students and the parents involved with this STEM program and letting them know what it's about. I really appreciate it, and we thank you for everything that you do. Liana, I want to say, congratulations on being Student of the Month. I think it's really awesome, not only do you do for the Capturing Kids' Hearts and the Gifted and Talented, but working on the volleyball field, working on the softball field, it shows a lot of character that you're not only doing stuff on the outside, you're helping out your school. So thank you for everything you do. Glad to have students like you.
Thank you.
Ezra, kind of the same thing, congratulations on Student of the Month. I'm really happy to see also you're part of the Capturing Kids' Hearts and the Gifted and Talented, along with the dual-language. So thank you for everything that you do. Also, that you are interested in cybersecurity, I think that's awesome. Me being in the Air Force for 17 years as a mechanic, cybersecurity, that's the way to go. They're different more, so it's really cool that you're interested in that, and I hope that you continue that. So thank you all, congratulations.
Okay. One, two. One, two.
Parents, show up and come on up here in the middle if you want.
Do you want to take one of my grandparents up there?
Come on, sure.
They're 84 years old.
Get right there beside her. That'd be great.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations. You're on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're on the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wait for the EOC. You can see we went up in fourth grade, sixth and eighth. And where I'm showing the approaches in the purple, that is the state's standard for passing. So that many of our students passed and we're improving from grade level, the same grade level each year. From fourth grade in, say, 2021, 2022, 2023. In mathematics, we went up in fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So from that same grade level, sixth graders first. Yep, fourth graders went up from the previous school year.
So the third grade looks like is the opportunity. So if we go back a couple of years, those were the children that first came into public school in the COVID, is that correct?
Yes, so if you're, yeah, if you're counting those dates, they were our, let's see, 2020 was COVID, 2023. So they were our kinder students.
Okay.
And science and social studies, same thing. Science has gone up in both grade levels, fifth and eighth, and social studies as well. I think I'm like Dr. Gilstrap, I went off my notes. I just started going off the report here.
Is that, is that, are some of those, I can't quite read the green, are some of those double digit? Like, is that a 12?
Yes, there's a 12. Uh huh. So then it, I didn't, I didn't want to overwhelm you with too much data, but in the meets and masters, there are a lot of grade levels that increased as well. So if approaches went up, their meets went up, masters went up. But you can kind of see the same trend as well with, with those that did not necessarily go up. And then I wanted to point out to you all the cohort data. So now this is from our third graders in 2021, we're at 60%. Those same third graders in fourth grade went up to 73%. And then in 2023, they went up to 75% in fifth grade. So for the two-year change, that's a 15% change. From a one-year, it's a 2%. Then looking at fourth grade, starting our fourth graders in 2021 went to 77% to 78% with a 26% increase. Fifth grade, same thing. I guess some of my little things are off. 66%, then they went up to 69%, then 75%. And a two-year change was nine. Our sixth graders, same thing, 52% to 79% and then to 83%. That's a 31%. And our seventh graders, 63 to 80%. Mathematics, almost the same trend, but two grade levels were just a little off. But our third graders continued to go up 55, 63, 80 with a 25% increase. Our fourth graders, 52 to 76. Now, then in the spring, they went down a little. So you'll see that the one-year cohort change was a negative six. However, over the three years, it's still an 18%. 72, fifth grade did the same thing. They went from 72 to 68, went back up to 69. So from last year, we had a 1% increase, but over two years, it's a little shy. And then 57 to 61 to 75% for our sixth graders. And eight, they ended up in eighth grade at 18%. And seventh stayed the same. Let me see, did I miss a slide? Okay, there we go. Now comparing our results to the state. If I could find my. We're above the state in sixth and eighth grade here. You can see we're at 78, the state was at 75 and in eighth grade, eighth grade, 82 for RLA, for reading language arts. In mathematics, however, we are above the state in fifth, seventh and eighth grade. And in science, we're above the state in both grade levels, fifth and eighth. And in social studies, we're just shy of 2% below. Now moving along to our high school, our EOC, our end of course. I want to mention that, well, when we get to algebra, I'll say that. But so our English one, out of, out of the five contents, four contents improved. English one, 8%, English two, 8%, biology, 2%. I don't know what's going on here. Our algebra one took a small decline, but that's also, I want to mention that, that, that our middle school students are included with that. However, middle school students, they're 100% at approaches and meets. And US history, 3%. I feel like I'm missing something. I did, okay. EOC, all students versus state. We've got some areas that we can grow in there if we want to catch up. But when you really look at it, it's, we're shy just a few percentage points, no more than 7%. We're between 7%, 7 and less from the state. And so this is another thing we wanted to point out was because our first, our retesters that take, have to retake algebra or English one or English two, they are not included later on in accountability. So there is a difference when you see all of our students. Of course, we want to look at all of our students and make sure that they're all growing and learning. But there is a slight, there is a difference. So the maroon is all students at FISD. The yellow is our first time tested. So for our ninth graders, that would be maybe their first time taking English one, biology and algebra one. So you can see with English two, we're right at the state with their first time testers as well. And if we compare our first time testers to the state's first time testers, we're also slightly shy by a few points. So in the summary, our areas that we grew in were fourth, sixth and eighth grade reading language arts, fourth through eighth grade mathematics, fifth and eighth grade science, and eighth grade social studies, English one, English two, biology, US history. We have a few areas, opportunities for growth, which are third grade RLA and third grade mathematics, fifth and seventh grade RLA, algebra one and our EOC retesters, just taking a look at those. We, there are some plan of actions for the results, the data that came out. It takes a lot of work actually to really dive into the data and to identify the areas where we can improve and where we want to continue growing our students. So later on this evening, I think the principals are going to go over their campus improvement plans, which will kind of give you a brief overview of some of this stuff as well. I mean, they may go, they'll be go a little bit more detailed. And FNE has, FNE, they all have their strategies. We're ready to roll. Any questions?
We kind of know what we're needing to improve on. Everybody's kind of working to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. They, the principals have even called me and asked me for very specific data from the STAR test as far as even looking into how the students answered their constructive responses. So that tells me that they're looking at individual students and where they need that support to get better. So, I mean, that's, that's, you know, from my, my perspective. But at the campus level, yeah, I know it's a big push. The district, we've been pushing our instructional model. So making sure that our, everything is aligned to the standards and has the rigor. So when they ask a question, that our students are prepared to be able to answer those questions. And I know that data, data-driven analysis, they're diving into that and working with their teachers and staff on preparing them for that.
You all just received the results back not too long ago, right?
Correct. It was like August 4th or 8th. I can't remember, I have a lot of dates. But yeah, it was.
So lots to take in before school starts, yeah?
Yeah. And that was, you're correct. It was a little later in the year than we're usually used to. So we get a lot of phone calls from the principals, the administrators, like, where's the data? I need it as soon as it comes out. And it's, you know, and I understand why them. So we do as much as we can.
But there was some, there was some good things when you showed the three-year and back to back. That's very encouraging. And when you compared it to high schools and the course, when you compared it the first time, we're real close to the state average.
Oh, absolutely.
So looking at the cohort groups where you're, because you may test fourth grade year after year, but that's a different group of kids.
Every year, yeah.
Common teachers, common instructional methods. So you got to always evaluate that. But it's also beneficial to look at those cohorts of kids to see from third grade to fifth grade, are they growing?
Yes.
Yes. That's good.
What's the projected score for the district and then for each campus?
Our projected score as far as.
Oh, y'all played around with the calculator or anything?
Dr. Wade is actually going to come up and talk to you about accountability here in just a moment. So, yeah, every time I want to look at it or dive into it, she's like, wait, 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 just do the data, the assessment. I'm like, okay, yes.
We really want, we really want to be very specific in our reports. One is on assessments and one is on accountability.
Because that's, oh, yeah, our students, all students. We want to make sure we're, we're looking at all our students as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Wade will give an update on the 22, 23, on LT3.
I'm going to do this because I cannot look sideways. Don't know what the video is going to look like. All right, good evening, President. Dr. Gilstrap, the board.
May I speak up just a little bit?
Oh, sorry, sorry, okay, I'll shout. Tonight I am going to share a little bit about an update on the accountability system. Typically, accountability results are released in August of every year. However, there is a delay this year because the state is doing a refresh on our system. So while the district does not have an issue with the concept of accountability or standards, we are somewhat frustrated with the retroactive application of an account, a proposed accountability system. And so tonight I'm going to share a little bit about those updates. So I'll be sharing some information that you'll see on slides that are directly from the Texas Education Agency as noted by, if you see their logo on the slide. I've added my own emphasis on a few slides that you'll note that might be in maroon or highlighted in yellow. TEA has indicated that the A to F indicators must be updated since the system has stayed the same for the last five years. However, I have noted that two of the last five years, districts received no ratings due to the impact of COVID. No tests were given in the spring of 2020 and the district had 30% of our students in remote learning in 2021. And in fact, in 2017, 18, districts only received an A to F rating. Campuses did not receive an A to F rating until the spring of 2019. So in reality, this will be year three of A to F ratings for campuses and year fours for the districts. Statute does require TEA to update the accountability system. But the timing of those updates is left up to the agency. So TA released, let me go back. TA released this feedback timeline for the A to F refresh cycle, which they show began in July of 2022. I want to point out just a few of the vocabulary words being used in this timeline. A preliminary outline, a potential system, a preliminary outline, possible adjustment, a preliminary framework. Oh, and in January, we get updated targets and cut points. And then in February, March, an updated framework is released. And then a proposed manual in the spring of 2023. So let's take a look about what was happening during this timeline. Here is our school year. And we tested students in December of 2022. In April and May, we tested three through eight as, as well as EOC testing. And then in May of 2023 is when we received the proposed accountability manual. Can you sense my little frustration? Again, that accountability manual is looking at the school year 22, 23 to apply a rating system that has not been finalized. So here we are this year, 23, 24. And sometime in September, this month, the final manual is supposed to be released.
Supposed to be released for last year's.
Accountability.
Accountability. It was also supposed, supposed to be released for this year's accountability prior to the school year starting. So not only have they not released last year, they haven't released this year's either. So TEA is a little behind.
So again, in almost every other system, there has been a phase in implementation when there are significant changes. However, this refresh is being applied retroactively all at once. So this is TA's slide about their seven refresh changes. And I'm going to go in each one of these, so I'm not going to talk about them specifically. But I do want to note, item six and seven do not specifically relate to FISD. So again, TA says and recognizes the methodology is changing. The ratings cannot be compared side to side. And it is possible, highlighted in yellow by me, that a campus with an A rating in 2022 may improve in 2023 and yet perceive a B rating. So we cannot compare 22 to 23. TA also recognizes that we have additional information we use to inform our student performance and our opportunities for continuous improvement. So here are just a few. Catherine Kids Heart Showcase School that we, that North has had. We've had another campus that was nominated and some more that are on the threshold of being nominated. We've had a blended learning showcase where districts from other, or staff from other districts came. And I know this is being recorded, but I'll just release the cat out of the bag. We got called by TA about our blended learning implementation at middle school, about a new grant they're getting ready to offer. And so they wanted to know how we were doing. TA called us. We have UIL competitions, our band, our one act play, our athletics competitions last year did very well. Our FFA students have gone to state. Our Texas Association of Future Educators had a national qualifier, the Skills USA competitions. With, in addition to those, we internally have a nationally normed math and reading scoring that we evaluate progress for students three times a year. So the state assessment data is not the only piece of data or accountability system that we're looking at. But let's return to the accountability system. So I'm going to give you just a brief review of what, how accountability is calculated and the proposed changes. There are three domains and an overall score is taken by calculating the better of student achievement or school progress, 70% for that, and then 30% for closing the gaps, which is our federal accountability, back to no child left behind. This particular calculation is not changing. So the first domain, student achievement. For elementary, middle schools, it is remaining the average of approaches, meets and masters. For high school, it is that approaches, meets and masters average at 40%, college career military readiness at 40% and the graduation rate at 20%. However, the CCMR and the graduation rate calculations are changing. And the district used to be rated the same as a high school and that is changing. I also want to point out, last year was the first year that our fifth and eighth grade students did not have the opportunity to do a retest. We used to do that and the writing test went away. There is now writing embedded in all reading tests as well as all content. So the first point that TA makes is that they are going to make an update to points and targets. They noted the bottom of this slide that CCMR rates have improved 38% since cut scores were originally set. Granted, that's an improvement. The graph over here on the right has a change from 47 to 65%. Do you see that? It's not CCMR, it's just average ratings. That looks huge, doesn't it? But, sorry, I have a statistics background and that graph is a little deceiving because the baseline on this graph does not begin at zero. Sorry, redid it. And that's what that graph might look like if we started at zero. Of course I did. So there is improvement, but it doesn't look like, wow, that looks like a major jump, right? Just a little misleading. And then down here at the bottom, they make a note. I blew this up so you could see this. CCMR data is a lagging indicator. So accountability rate for 2022 used 2021 graduates. Right? Are you following me? So please keep that in mind as we talk about the changes to the CCMR calculation. And then also TA states that the STAR achievement and relative performance cut points are not changing. Oh, but wait, we had a new test this year that we call STAR 2.0. So this is TA's direct quote. The redesign does not mean the test will be harder. Unlike previous changes to the state summative assessment, which historically have increased the rigor of the assessment, the STAR redesign does not increase the rigor of the test. Instead, the STAR was redesigned to make the test more tightly aligned to the classroom experience. Okay, let's take a look. So here is a third grade reading comparison. I'm not going to look at all the numbers, but just to give you an idea. Last year in 2022, the maximum points for the third grade reading test was 34. And you can see over here, I'm just looking at this approaches column, the percent correct to get a scale score of 1345 was 50%. So you've got a 50% equates to, right, 1345. So let's look at the test this year. The maximum point this year was 52. And the percentage correct dropped to 35%. But TA kept their word and the scale score remained the same of 1345. But is the test harder? I don't know. Second point, previously mentioned, our frustration with the A to F refresh being implemented all at once, it's not phased in. The second update that TA is proposing is a phase in for the calculation of industry-based certifications, what concept? For the class of 2022, that's this year's accountability rating, there's an IBC industry-based certification list that we've used. And there's a sunset of list of IBCs that are being phased out. Okay? So you can see each year, there's a new list coming up. This was version two, we got version three next year. We still get to have a few sunsets. We get updated lists and one course aligned to the program of study. I mean, every year it just gets different for the next five years. But we knew this was happening. The high school has worked over the last couple of years to align our industry-based certifications with our CTE courses to increase the number of students getting IBCs. Again, we knew it was coming and it's being phased in. And isn't this a concept? Allowing districts time to update their programs of study. Sorry, frustration showing again. Just as a reminder, there are 12 ways that students can earn a CCMR point, either in college readiness, military readiness or career-ready indicators. However, I will note the military readiness, I'm sorry, Mr. Flair, we don't get that until this year's graduates, which will count for next year's accountability. And we've got to submit that in the spring of this year. And then I also mentioned the CCMR indicator phase in. Now, while TA, TA has notified districts of the upcoming phase in of the industry-based certifications, we were notified during this school year that the cut points for the CCMR indicators would be drastically changed. You see highlighted a number 60 and a number 88. TA notes that CCMR performance has skyrocketed. I'm going to show you some data that I question that as well. But the cut point for an A previously was set at 60%. Then you got an A. TA has decided that due to the skyrocketing of performance, the cut point applied to graduates in 2022. Who did we just graduate? 2023. During this school year, we found out the application of the rating for students who had graduated over a year ago was going to change from 60 to 88 to be an A. TA has said the performance in CCMR has skyrocketed. I pulled some reports for the state for CCMR. And this is what I found. It does show an increase in CCMR, but I think from 54 to 65 is 11 percentage points? I don't know, Mr. Shodrock, is that skyrocketing? Now, however, maybe TA has accounted for the changes that have occurred in the calculation of CCMR over the years. For example, our 20,000, or 2018 graduates had a list of 73 industry-based certifications. And then we got a half a point for a coherent sequence of classes. They started welding and kept taking higher level welding classes. Our 2019 graduates had a list of 245 industry-based certifications that would count. So I would think, yeah, we're, we're going to see an increase for them. And then what happened in our accountability for 2021 with our 2020 graduates? Who stayed home for the last nine weeks of school? It went down, right? And we had a COVID impact for the following year. So the last two years, the rating has been about the same. So I'm not sure where they get skyrocketing. So again, this is being applied retroactively to graduates from 2021. I'll try to get off my soapbox, soapbox now. So let's look at the accountability scaling for accountability. Previously, a score of 60 would be scaled to a 90 or an A. TA has proposed a score of 88 will be an A. And to get a B, it's going from 48 to 78. A C is going from 39 to 64 and a D from 26 to 51. Again, scales being applied to previous year graduates we can no longer work with to obtain a CCMR point. In addition, TA is proposing a change to the scaling for graduation rates. Previously, a rate of 96% was scaled to an A. TA is proposing that goes up to 98 for an A. And for a B, from 94 to 96. And for a C, from 92 to 94. And for a D, 86 to 88. Please note, last year, if your graduation rate was 94, you got a B for graduation. This year, you get a C. Let's move on. Domain two, school progress. This has two indicators. Part A is academic growth for reading and math. And the calculation for academic growth is changing this year. Surprise! Relative performance is being calculated the same except for high school. So part A is the growth for reading and math from year to year. In the past, this was measured by a student's growth of one year or more from the previous grade using a calculation the state called the STAR Progress Measure. The STAR Progress Measure is going to be calculated again next year, but will not be used to count for accountability. This year, the calculation is changing and I'll share that with you in just a second. But also relative performance is the second way. And this is just an exponential graph saying if your economic disadvantage percentage is up, then you've got to, you have to score less in order to get an A. So for example, about 65% at A, I'm going to have about 50% achievement to get an A. So it gives you, it does give you a little bit of break. Although TA does say accountability system does not adverse, is not adversely affecting schools with high poverty. So the third change TA indicates is the improved ability to recognize growth. What they mean by that is they're going to include more students in the calculation. High schools previously could only count English two and algebra one students for growth. This year, English one students will also be included in the calculation. And elementary students, if a student took a test in Spanish last year and transferred to English this year, we'll be able to count them as well. Now TA did give us a quarter of a point for any student who passed this year but did not pass last year. But again, I'm just saying, that table looks deceiving because that looks like a one point, right? This one point counts as one point. This you got to multiply by 0.25. And I also have to state the actual calculation of academic growth is changing. Without getting too much in the weeds, if you want to look at this in more depth, I'll show you later. The growth was.
I think we're already in the weeds, but okay.
The STAR Progress Measure is going away, but I want to point out, here's just an example. If a student progresses, they could get a half a point. If they really progress more with an indicator, it's one point. There's a potential, a student, for example, at the meet grade level, if they stay meet grade level, they get a one. But, oh, I'm going to back down to high approaches. I didn't do quite as well, but hey, I passed. I get no points for that with this indicator because this is all about growth. Again, relative performance, the calculation is not changing except for high school because guess what? They're going to get to put in CCMR weights and CCMR is changing. So not only is CCMR changing, it's affecting the weights for relative performance. Then finally, we get to the last domain, closing the gaps. This is our federal accountability, which has up to 14 different indicators and six different components. And since I've already gotten too many weeds, I'll try to get us out on top of the grass just to say that this is changing significantly. So within the closing the gaps domain, they're, they're focusing instead of the 14 to four supergroups and changing the weights for those, reducing the minimum size and changing the weights for those, reducing the minimum size and changing it to a zero-to-four-point calculation. The four supergroups are all students, the two lowest-performing racial/ethnic groups, and then a high-focus group they call, that includes economically disadvantaged, merchant bilinguals, special education, and highly mobile. And then the four points, sorry, I went too fast, is all about whether we met a target. Did want to point out, this in red, I did not update this slide. This is from TA, that we're focusing on the lowest-performing groups. We're also, so there's an example of the fourteen going down to four. Again, all students and high focus will be the same categories for all campuses and districts. But this two lowest-performing could change from campus to campus depending on which group performs lowest on your campus. And also, this concept of decreasing the minimum size to ten, this means a group of ten students could impact the score at least a fourth of it. Ten students.
So if ten students were to take it, two kids don't do well, that's eighty, that's eighty percent.
It's twenty percent that did not grow.
Have they considered the immigrants that are coming in that, you know, that we have?
There's a highly mobile population calculation, but immigrants is not necessarily a population. So again, the calculation of accountability is based on the better of domain one or two, the student achievement, school progress, that's seventy percent. And thirty percent is domain three, which is closing the gap to federal accountability. Oh, but wait, there's more. The district calculation is changing. And I'm not going to go too much in-depth in this just to say the district used to be evaluated very much like a campus, like the high school, right? Except we just had all the students and all the populations. This year, it's going to be, we will be proportionately weighted based upon the rating for each individual campus and the percentage of students at that campus. So here's my summary slide. The things in yellow are where there are changes happening for CCMR, graduation rate, academic growth, relative performance, and the domain three, closing the gaps domain. Now, TA said you can't compare two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. So they did a what-if analysis. What if we took last year's data and applied it to what we are proposing preliminarily, the accountability system to look like? So here's what that looks like. If we were to compare that, sixty-six percent of campuses across the state would have the same rating. The number might change, but the rating letter would be the same. However, twenty-eight percent of campuses, roughly one in four campuses, oh, sorry, sorry. One in four campuses would have a rating that decreased. And six percent of campuses would have improved. So we're going to look at a what-if for our campuses. Again, let me caution you, this is not our projected rating. This is what if we took two thousand twenty-two data and applied what we know so far being proposed about accountability. Does that make sense? All right, so for North Elementary, they were rated last year as a B. So what if I take the data and apply it to the preliminary accountability? They would have been A. Yay, there's my six percent. South Elementary...
I'm sorry. So last year's, the data, we're looking at last year's data, last year's calculator was a B?
Yes.
And this year's calculator is an A?
This year's with the same data.
With the same data as last year?
Not this year's data, I'm not projecting.
I'm not projecting.
And I think what's really big and what really affected North's scores was the closing the gap. That they have a lot of gain, which you'll see year over year. It's going to be difficult to do. Go ahead.
This year's scored like last year's.
Yeah, it's really hard because I want to show those principals, Dr. Hornsworth's like, what is this? It is not their proposed rating. It is if we took the data from last year and applied, okay? So South Elementary, last year was a C. If we took their data and applied it to what we think the proposed accountability was for two thousand twenty-two, they would have been a D. Middle School, last year was a C rating. We do the what-if analysis, they would have stayed exactly the same. High School. Please remember, CCMR changed drastically. Graduation rates changed. The closing the gaps domain is impacted by both of those. High School was rated a B. The what-if puts them at a D. And I don't have the slide up here, but the district was a B and would have been a C. So to answer your question earlier, Ms. Martinez, I'm not showing a projection about accountability tonight because I've not even talked with the principals about the overall calculations about what that next will be. But the accountability ratings will be coming out at the end of this month. And next month, I will be sharing what the accountability ratings are for two thousand twenty-three. Who knows what happens between now and then? There's a lot of things you may have seen in the...
So if we have a large gap, we're going to make that gap up. We're going to get a great score. Then next year, we're going to be up here, it doesn't make a bit of sense. We're going to get a terrible score, but we're operating higher, kids better outcome, better output.
It's all high calculated.
Part of the reason why we wanted to show a lot of green, red. See, here we are gaining, we are getting better. Do we still have a place to go? Absolutely. But that may result in us dropping. The other thing, and obviously I've sent you all some information about, there is a lawsuit pending. I think they're up to about twelve schools now that have all joined this lawsuit to try to petition the commissioner of TA to put the whole thing on pause. They are supposed to have a court go before a judge later this month. And potentially, maybe the judge will put an injunction in place and put a pause on it until they can figure it out. I'm not recommending we get into that, but just wanted to share with you, this is a very convoluted, very much in the weeds issue. And by all means, we do not shy away from accountability. We don't shy away from assessments, we want that. But we want it so that we can, we can look at students and see how they cohort and how they do. We want it so that we can make adjustments in how we teach, what we teach, how we work with teachers and train teachers. But then also, you have people that say, well, you know, you teach to the test. Well, we can also sit here and play the game and, hey, we're not going to offer that CTE class because everybody may want it, but yeah, but it's not going to get us the point for CTE. You know, so we could do all those things, but that's not, may not be what's in the best interest of the kids.
Right.
So just to let you know, by all means, I would never complain about things. But it is what it is, and it's where we're at. And where it at can be very confusing, especially when things change after the game started. You'll hear a lot of people talk about that moving the goalpost and things like that. It's accurate, it is true. It's not just Florisville.
So somebody's going to get hurt if they're operating at a high level. They don't have a lot of game, they're going to get a D or a C. And they're putting out kids left and right, send them to...
College and...
Everywhere else, I mean, they're doing well, but they're going to get a terrible rating.
That closing the gap piece could be a huge one.
Huge.
And if a kid is, if a student is already at masters, and if they don't stay at masters and they just miss one more question to drop, they're still passing, they're still doing great, they're still meeting, but you're going to get a D for that because they didn't sustain. So you know, I have a son who's in the third grade. I would never want to do this. Where do you want those third graders to be? Because if they all score masters, well, now they got to stay masters the entire time. I mean, and that's not what we want. We don't want to set kids up to fail, but you also got to look at growth.
It seems like we get, each test that they have, we get better and the kids are better and they don't like it because we're meeting our goals and they...
So I'm sure that there are political pieces to this that I don't want to get into. But this rating system could potentially come out the end of this month. And you're looking at a special session in October in Austin to potentially talk about school finance, school voucher programs, educational savings accounts. Is all of that tied to this and see how schools have now dropped? Well, we may drop, but you change how we're judging everything. So there are some political gains at play as well, there's no doubt. It's frustrating to see how they developed this, it looks like in a vacuum, with no perception of what reality is in schools. That's the first one.
Thank you. Thank you for not giving me a card.
I had two of British.
They were.
All right, next item on the agenda is item number five, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or discussions on the items on the consent agenda?
So board members, we do have the typical consent agenda. We did receive the Karnes County extension agent agreement for four H to be adjunct professor with us so that those students participating in Karnes County can receive extracurricular absences as well. So that is included in the consent agenda. Other than that, it is typical and the administration will recommend approval as presented.
I'm moved to accept the administration's recommendation. I have a second. Mr. Shawrock. Any further questions or discussion? On paper, let me know by raising your hand. All right, our next action item is to consider approval of TASB policy update one twenty-one and local policy update, FFAC local presented by Dr. Bill.
Board members, we did have a policy committee meeting back in August. And the committee met to discuss update one twenty-one and did not have any recommendations for changes, but I do want to go over just a few things. First of all, be expecting update one twenty-two will be a big one as they start to implement a lot of the stuff from the eighty-eight legislature. Also, just so you know, if a law is passed and goes into effect September first, the law does go into effect September first, regardless of if the district has the policy in place or not. So sometimes there's confusion whenever laws go to effect, but we haven't caught up with it on our policy side. TASB, other organizations, they do a lot of that policy writing. And so they're trying to do it as fast as they can and turn that out. But just know that if a law goes into effect September first, it does go into effect. So just a few of the policies that are included. There is an accounting, sorry, can we get over there to that page? There is an accounting piece in which the superintendent can designate an aggregate. So if we have one person or one company that we do send money to, they may have multiple projects. If that total exceeds five thousand dollars. Also, CKE, there's been, this has to do with security personnel. There's been a lot of discussion and talk about that. So they now have separated the security personnel out and made it CKE-A. And so that, basically, they took that entire policy and made it the A policy. So that is a change just because of all of the details that are becoming more convoluted with security personnel. CLB is grounds and maintenance. This particularly applies to IPM, integrated pest management. Whenever it comes to residential facilities for students, we do not have that. We don't house any students anywhere. That would be for residential facilities and districts that have that. In CO local, we did talk about meal plan. We have a practice or we had a policy in place that they maxed out at fifteen dollars. Food shaming is something that's not real good for kids, it's not good for parents. If a student comes through the line and they have that tray and you realize that they're not, you know, they're already at their fifteen-dollar limit, if you tell them throw the tray away, somebody's still paying for that food, whether it's the district or you charge it to the kid or SEDEXO's not going to pay for it. So we do want to make sure our policy matches our practice and our practice matches our policy. And so we do have a change in there to change it just to unlimited. And last year, we did have some money that we had to write off. However, we do still contact parents, we still work with administrators and SEDEXO one, get them free reduced lunch forms, see if they fill that out and qualify, but also to recoup that money as best we can. We can also do other things. It may not be taking food away from them, but it may be, hey, they need to be in good standing in order to apply for this or do this. They're not in good standing if they have that now. There was one other one. It was... There was FD, which talked about student admissions in particular to make sure we're awarding credits, even partial credits if we need to in a timely manner. A lot of times, school districts, not that Florisville has done it, but school districts across the state don't put prorated credits onto transcripts. And they want to make sure that we're doing that, taking care of that business. The other one that we did have is FFAC. That is not included in the board update, but it is one that we have discussed and proposed. The committee did not have any questions about it. This is in regards to NARCAN. What this policy would do is allow anyone that we designate as being trained to have that on campus to use in those emergencies when needed, when an overdose or anything like that is identified. We would work with our police department, police officers, as well as our nurses to house those and to be trained in administering that as needed. We'd also be working with the county and Mr. Schröler's been in contact with them to provide the NARCAN as well as the training that goes with it. So that would be at no charge to the district. Any questions about the policy update? Again, be expecting a little more robust coming forward out of the eighty-eight legislature. If not, administration recommends the board approve the additions, revisions, and deletions of local policies as recommended by TASB policy update one twenty-one and local policy update FFAC local as presented.
We have a motion, okay?
I'm moved to accept the administration's...
I say.
Mr. Moots makes a motion, I'll second that. All right, any further questions or discussion? There are none. If you're in favor, raise your hand, please. This motion carries seven zero. Next action item is to consider approval of campus improvement plans presented by Dr. Wade.
Good evening again. Tonight, the principals will share their two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four campus improvement plans for approval. In addition to this presentation, the complete plans for each campus are included in your packet, which also lists the strategies for each objective. Last month, the board approved the goals and objectives for the district improvement plan. The goals, as you well know, excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, and strategic resource alignment. Also last month, the board approved the performance objectives listed here under each goal. Guess why? The campus goals and performance objectives are exactly the same. So instead of repeating each other, the campus principals will share briefly some of the strategies they are using to accomplish each goal. However, the board will only be asked tonight to approve the goals and performance objectives for each campus improvement plan, which are identical. Each campus also conducted a comprehensive needs assessment and reviewed data to determine their specific strategies to accomplish these goals. And we will begin with Florisville North Elementary and Principal Brooks.
Good evening again. Some specific strategies for goal one for North Elementary include continuing our capturing kids' hearts focus. We have successful two years of national showcase goal. We'd like to add a third year to our banner. In order to do that, we are focusing on empowering our students to implement the practices as well as strengthening our weekly SEL lessons. We've also seen a lot of success with personalizing our learning, which means we are planning to expand blended learning to be campus-wide this year. So we're adding on Kinder and Fifth. And we are going to help students track their individual progress with their own personalized data trackers. We also have a new instructional coach at North Elementary. So we're going to work on refining our PLC practices and strengthening our team planning. Our teachers in particular are very thankful for the added conference time, which means they get to collaborate more. And we all know that teachers do a tough job supporting students and they need to be uplifted as well. So we have some very systemic processes to make sure that we are affirming and showing them appreciation throughout the year and providing them times for input. We also want to make sure we're affirming our students, particularly the progress that they're making. So we have some systemic processes to recognize them for both academics, behavior, or individual accomplishments. So we have our PTA Student of the Month, our Tiger Tikes, our Positive Office referrals. We also hold very well-attended community events. So we have trunk or treat coming up next month to welcome our community members into the school in a very safe way that highlights some of the experiences our kids get. So we also do like Spooky STEM at trunk or treat, for example. And we also had some success last year that we'd like to build on this year with some of our guest presentations. So we have like a parent who's an engineer come and perform science experiments with the kids during their science block. I have a parent who was a SWAT team member, so he came and helped deliver our Community Helpers lessons during social studies. So different ways like that to build the partnerships with our parents and community members we're always looking to build on. As well as always continuing to strengthen our security practices. So you may have noticed some of the windscreen on the playground that faces FN seven seventy-five. So that's just another example of our controlled access into the campus. And like the rest of the district, we are implementing our Raptor app this year to help us with our drills and practice for some of those safety incidents. And at this time, I would like to hand it off to my colleague, Sal, and dear friend, Dr. Schröder.
Just so you know, it's always a coin flip because whoever goes first gets all the ideas, so.
Yes. I was told I had a minute and that Aaron Rodgers was playing on the Jets and I needed to hurry. So I listed several things that both campuses have in common and I highlighted Danielle the things that are a little bit different. For us, we actually are having Art Linda Learning Showcase Day October 19th where several schools from around possibly even the nation are coming to see how we are doing. We are phasing in our new Florisville Learning Experience. Generation Texas Week is where we bring about awareness of the opportunities kids have after school, after they graduate like college career and we start exploring those options. And then, of course, a really big career day in the spring with over 26 people attending that to show off their careers. Our staff this year wanted to do something to celebrate them and they said, we'll pay for it, we just want to do something different. So we are doing like a staff monthly Morel dining where we'll eat as a grade level family because they all have lunch at the same time and they are bringing in like a food truck or capirelli's as catering, things like that. So they are kind of putting that together. For goal three, we're having our first annual fall festival in November. We'll work it to welcome all families and community members to come and celebrate at night with us after school. We'll have our second annual dual language showcase event in the spring. Our first grade team does reading restaurant where families come in and read different themes to their parents. Fine arts night where our fine arts and electives rotations will get to show off what they've been working on all year. And then our counselors have a grandparents raising grandchildren group where they meet with the grandparents just to help them navigate raising young children. Goal four, big for us itself, all student classes were moved into the main building from the portables. Really big safety issue. I love having everybody in the main building. We don't have any kids out there unless they are escorted out there such as the speech therapist might take one out there or a diet to test the student, things like that. So it's really safe for us and all the Kinder teachers have parties this year, so they're super excited about that. And I think I'm handing it over to Ms. Bear.
Great, we've covered tactical strategy. So I'm going to go over a couple of updates for Florisville Middle School. Most of my time is going to be spent right here on goal one. The numbers that are listed out there next to that, that's going to be the performance and the performance objective as well as the strategy attached to it. So a couple of the things that we really focused on, the first thing up there, the new data tracking system that's focused on one-plus years of growth. As you just heard Dr. Wade mention, STAR approaches, beats, and masters, those are moving targets that are changing pretty regularly on us. So instead, we created a system to where we're really focusing in on where students have been for the last couple of years, establish that baseline and make sure that we have that accelerated growth. So that's really where we focused on specifically looking at students who are not showing growth and intervening with those students during like our empower period and offering them additional supports. Another thing that we did was in the past, we didn't have really a whole lot of supports for EB students short of just our teachers being ESL certified. This year, we created during our empower period an EB class where we have our groups of our beginners, the ones that are just learning to speak English pool, and they're working with a teacher who is bilingual to help them with acquisition of English language. And then we also implemented a GT class. Again, in the past, one of the things that we were doing was we were having those kids work on projects and go through empower outside of the school day. Now during that empower period, we have a specific GT class year round where they are meeting specifically with just GT students and GT teachers that are GT trained to help them really get some high-quality projects as well as, you know, start to begin some project-based learning in those classes. And then we also did some updates to our advanced math track. If you remember, this will be our last year actually of this where when students who go into algebra, the first semester they're taking eighth grade math, second semester they're taking algebra, we kind of revamped that advanced math track because I'll just be honest with you, as a math teacher, seventh and eighth grade math, they're really comprehensive. You're having to do algebra, geometry, probability, statistics, personal finance. It's a big broad overview of math, whereas algebra is really focused in on algebra. So what we did was we took seventh grade, eighth grade, layered those together because those standards aligned very well, made that our pre-algebra section. Next year, those kids that roll up into algebra will only take algebra for the entire year. And so it's just a more sequential path going up and it will offer opportunity for more students to take algebra. Right now, we have one section with about 28 kids. Next year, we'll have three sections, so about 90 students able to take algebra. We also added in journalism, just allowing kids to explore other interests. They're creating digital content, things like that. So if you've seen some of the videos on our webpage, those were created by our journalism class. And then lastly, our behavior interventions. This year, we're focusing heavily on attendance and tardies. So that's going to be part of our positive behavior intervention system. We're going to have our Kona eyes, block parties, things focused around attendance and tardies, trying to eliminate some of that and obviously increase our attendance rate. So the other things, we're going to be pretty aligned with the elementary schools as well. We're going to be celebrating some staff. We did do a lot of PLC time refinement because we have those two periods now that teachers obviously are very thankful for. So what we have determined is the things like planning, building assessments, reviewing student data, we're really honing in on that for that PLC time, whereas that conference period is now recaptured for parents, for them to make those parent contacts, set up conferences. And so we've gotten really refined with what we're doing in those timeframes to help some of those teachers out. And then during the weird listening tour, one of the staff concerns was we needed some updated equipment, so glad to announce we purchased a new refrigerator for the break room.
Important thing.
That is very important. For as far as community partnerships, one of the things, some of the things that we're doing to reach out to the community, we've started to push out a weekly update that comes out every Monday. We have an EB night that is hosted by my academic dean, who is a phenomenal lady who helps me out with a lot of these things. And then we also have career speakers kind of consistent with elementary schools. So we have people come up to our investigating careers class. We had Judge Shaw come out last year. We had Matt Bonner from the Spurs come out. That wasn't during investigating careers, but he came out and met with our kids. And then last, for strategic, strategic planning, one of the things that we sent out to our staff this year was some purchasing timelines, when we need purchase orders in so that they can strategically think about what they need that year. And we kind of gave them some deadlines of, we need to know exactly what you want to purchase, send us your list by these dates, just to clear up some of that and be more transparent about when we need to spend those funds by so that no departments are losing their money or it's being recaptured by the campus. So with that, it was primarily just being transparent and then we're kind of taking some input on campus projects. One, as of right now, is they want to do an outdoor garden, so we're kind of starting to go through the process of collecting some of that information. With that being said, I will now turn it over to our high school principal, Dr. Gilstrapp.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Gilstrapp, board trustees. So at the high school for goal number one, excellent student outcomes, we have a couple of initiatives I just want to highlight. We have adopted a student-centered lesson plan as outlined by the new Florisville Learning Experience, and so we're going to execute that across the entire campus. We do have an SST committee, which is designed to address students with social emotional outcries. It could be suicidal ideations, it could be anxiety, depression. So they meet every week with our counseling team and our assistant principals to just kind of monitor those kids to see how we can best support them. We are using some data-driven decision-making with our teachers. So the last couple of years, startling fact, we have about half of our staff with one, two, or three years of experience. So we really have a green high school teaching staff. And so some of those individuals don't necessarily come from a teaching background, which can be a good thing, but we do need to teach them about data, how to use data, how can we better utilize that information from our kids. As Dr. Wade so eloquently described on the state accountability, how critical CCMR is, that's been a huge priority since I've been here, training our counselors, making sure that's a high priority, and that's affecting all the schedules. So when kids kind of complain to you or complain to me, like, why can't I get this class? Well, we got to keep them in their career track. We have to make sure they have that either college point, their career point, or through the college. So it's, it's something that we're holding them accountable to and that's, that's new at Florisville. They can't get early release or later arrival until they have that CCMR point. The FAST program, which Mr. Rios will probably talk a little bit about, this is a new program that Dr. Gilstrapp has kind of pioneered that recently got approved. It's really aimed at our at-risk students that help them on a modified bell schedule that we can graduate and get out of, get out of high school a little bit quicker. And the last thing I want to point out there is flex. We do have in-school tutoring during our flex time and that helps kids who are busy after school or busy before school, but they're getting much-needed intervention and academic support during the school day. Goal number two, superior workplace environment. Again, we're bringing in a LEAD Forward. If you're not familiar with LEAD Forward, they're a tremendous organization that does a lot of quality professional development. We've, we're going to be bringing them in several times to help train our teachers and give them the skills for increasing student engagement, working with data, just overall great professional development. Security is a big, big deal for us, checking our doors, the new Raptor system. We're also engaging our staff in the, in the four pillars of school effectiveness. Basically, we're looking at our campus identity, our culture, academics, and continuous improvement. Every staff member is part of one of those pillars and through the course of the year, we'll be dividing up and they'll be looking at specific aspects to address to help move our campus forward. Goal number three, exceptional customer service and community engagement. We also do positive office referrals. I think I heard Principal Brooks talk about that. We actually recognize kids during our pep rallies, call them out in front of the whole school, give them a positive office referral with some candy and a sugary drink and take pictures and put them on Facebook. We do send out weekly communication to our parents. I think that's a priority that there's a lot of stuff going on and we want them to know what's going on so they can be a part of our, our campus. I have been meeting routinely with our CTE coordinator and it's a priority for us that we expand our partnerships, look at other potential programs, and making sure that we have more people sitting at the table to help, help us have those conversations about what's happening in the community or career-wise that we're, we need to bring to Florisville High School. And goal number four, strategic resources. Again, every student this year has been great. Last year, if you remember, we didn't get ID badges for like the first four weeks. This year, every kid had one day one and they're, they're showing us every day. It's not enough arguments, not a talkback, it's here's my ID badge, here's my ID badge. It's great. We're implementing safety drills, the Raptor system again, and so we're just really making sure that the kids know the routines, the procedures. We practice them frequently and it's a priority for us. With that, I'd like to introduce the alternative school principal, Mr. Rios.
EB, Dr. Gilstrapp, Dr. Odom, board. I'm going to go over all the strategies. A lot of what I have, our administration has kind of, it's going to echo a lot of their presentation. So I'll go through this and show you what we have to define a little bit differently. So for goal number one, comprehensive safety policies, we have a lot of those in place because of the type of students that we deal with. We want to make sure that we have just by every scenario, our staff is trained and we have just general policies to keep the students safe, the staff safe, you know, on our campus. As far as targeted learning plans, that's another one we have where most of our students that come in, they need a lot of individual help when it goes to their academics and their behavior. So we do a lot of things that are just targeted for that specific student. We have the flexible school option. I know Dr. Farquhar talked about that a little bit and you guys heard me present on that in the summer. Right now, we're looking to have about three or four students start with us within the next couple of weeks. So it's just something that we can do to support our students based on their needs. Career exploration, we have that going on in our campus where we have presenters come out to our campus, we have surveys, so the students are able to identify maybe possible career paths that might help them later on down the road. We even had Mr. Gonzalez go through an HVAC presentation with some of the students and provide information on how to get certified to become an HVAC specialist. So that's something that we're really using our resources that we have within the district. So for goal number two. We have customized training programs for our staff that, we developed these training programs because of, it just includes a range of topics, classroom management, trauma-informed teaching, conflict resolution, special education strategies, and cultural sensitivity to kind of the needs of the different types of students that we have on our campus. We, of course, have daily door checks for the safety and security part to keep our environment safe. We have monthly staff celebrations where we have a employee of the month. We celebrate birthdays and then we have, we're starting like a little net awards for our staff, just things that they do well on our campus. So we just want to make sure that we celebrate that. For goal number three. What we did is we implemented a student behavior incentive program. So this is for the student engagement piece that we have on our campus. Now, most of our placements are tied to points, so students either get points or they, they complete their days. If they get points, they're able to get out a little bit earlier than their days assigned. And that's usually how our placements go here in Florisville. However, in addition to that, we implemented a leveling system within our program where students, if they do well, they level into different categories and they earn privileges on campus, whether it's an extra snack on Friday or they're able to wear hoodies or on campus. Those are things we never allowed before that we're actually implementing within the program right now. And so far, we're seeing students improve. We had students that didn't do a whole lot of work last year that were starting to implement this program, they're starting to turn in more work than they did last year, they're starting to come in dress code, and we're having a whole lot less offenses because of that program. So it's something that we're really proud of and it's something that we worked hard over the summer to try to figure out a way to implement it. And right now, we're working through some wrinkles, but I think it's going to be something that's going to be a really successful work program here pretty soon. We also have unified classroom behavior reports, so that's how we keep the students, the parents informed and actually the students on where they're at with their points and how they're doing as far as their progress within our campus. So the parent is able to sign into these reports and they can view their students' progress every single day if they want to. The students also can check their progress and they can check their points and check where they're at on our campus. We have community presentations as well. Like I mentioned previously, we have local organizations that come through. We also have positive actions that we have with the county. They provide information on career choices as well, drug awareness and various topics to increase education and awareness, dangers and safeties of adolescents. Goal number four. Really here, the thing that we focused on quite a bit was the streamlined processes. We found a way to just kind of tidy up some of the things that we do at the end of the school year. We were able to get in contact with our administrators at the other campuses and provide them with placement orders that already had, some of the carryover students already had their days and their points calculated for them to where all they had to do is really just tell us whether they wanted the student to go back to the main campus or carry over for the following year. That's something that was a little bit different because at the end of the year, when we have students that could possibly go back early or if they're going to carry over the following year, it gets quite confusing. So we went ahead and just worked out a process to where we're able to work with the administrators at the main campus where it's not so confusing and we can get that done pretty efficiently. And of course, the Raptor system. I think everybody's talked about that. That's something that's on our campus, the updated version of it. And we're working hard to try to make sure everybody understands how to use the new Raptor system. So if there are no questions, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Schröder for early childhood camps.
Ms. Wagner was under the weather. By the way. Yes, yes, so I told her I would present for her. She only gave me 30 seconds. Okay, the little biddies are learning their safety drills and they're practicing once a month, fire drills and things like that, train them early. And then pre-K students will adhere to, we have pre-K guidelines and ongoing growth and then the parents get a little progress report three times a year with their letters, sounds, and names, numbers, shapes, colors, things like that. Under goal two, PD with best practices for the early learners. She has a daily huddle with her entire staff to ensure communication, shout-outs and supports, and then ensuring procedures and practices are articulated clearly at the campus, which you know shares with district office for our little biddies. Goal three, for community engagement, they're partnering with EEP to make sure we are meeting parent needs, parent interests, campus needs, and things like that. And goal four, continuing to recruit the little biddies. The sooner we get them in school, the better the elementary is and keeping that 17 kids to two adult ratio in the classrooms. So with that, any questions for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say that the principals, all of you did an outstanding job in getting, I mean, some, some of these things are just, they blow me away, some of the goals. You guys have done great, and I, and I, and I for one appreciate, and I know the board appreciates the hard work that y'all put into this, and not easy, but y'all have done a great job.
I think we have some very strong leaders.
Yes, very much so. Very much so.
There's nothing like telling them to squeeze it into you guys.
You got six people talked in 20 minutes.
Yes, that was good, yes.
Are there any questions about the goals and objectives for the campuses? If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the 2023-2024 Campus Improvement Plan goals and objectives as presented.
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Next motion, Mr. Wood. So both of your hands. All right. All in favor of accepting any of the questions? I'll accept your recommendation. Thank you so much, Dr. Wade. Dr. Seigle will resolution setting tax rate for the 23 tax year by Ms. Angell.
Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrath, Board of Trustees. This evening, we will be considering the tax rate for 2020, tax year 2023, which is required by the state to be adopted by September 30th. This year's total tax rate is, we are looking at 90.6766 cents, which is 20.27567 cents less than last year. So we're about 20 and a quarter cents less than our tax rate last year. This is coming as a result of House Bill III, as well as a special session that with, that occurred back in June. So we're looking at an MNO tax rate of 66.94 cents. That's a maximum compressed tax rate of 61.94 cents calculated by the state provided to us. We add our five cents of Tier Two tax rate on top of that for a combined MNO tax rate of 66.94 cents. Then we add to that our INS tax rate, which is strictly to pay for the district's annual bonded indebtedness payments, and that is 23.7366 cents. So that's how we come to our total tax rate of 90.6766 cents. More than half, more than half of the district and the state are at the floor of the MCR tax rate, which is 61.92 cents. We're at 61.94 cents, so we're right there. So if there are, you can have the tax rate calculation in your board packet, the six, seven, eight-page calculation sheet.
Breathe.
So, or there, again, this also doesn't include, I mean, this rate will stay the same. However, because of joint House Resolution Two coming out of the, the special session, there will be a proposition on the ballot in November to increase the homestead exemption from $40,000 to $100,000. Our rate will stay the same, but that will affect our income. The way it is right now, at 40, at 40, $40,000, we are going to bring in fewer tax dollars this year. State is supposed to make those up, to be seen. So we're effectively lowering the tax rate by 8.82 cents. So if there are no, any questions?
So we're lowering it by 8.82?
Percent.
Percent.
Blowing it by 20 cents.
By 20 cents, yeah. Twenty, the total tax rate from last year is down a little over 20 cents, 20 and a quarter. Any questions? If there are no questions, the administration recommends the board approve the resolution setting the tax rate for the tax year 2023 as presented.
Motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
I'll move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Wood, second set. Any further questions? None. All in favor of approving the administration's recommendation? Raise your hand. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you. And Ms. Angell now will consider approval for the adult meal prices for the 23-24 school year.
In the ARM, which is the TDA's setting, I guess it's a whole manual of how you set meal pricing, things like that, the adult meal price must be looked at every year. Student meal prices, because we do have a healthy fund balance in the student child nutrition fund, we do not have to increase student meal prices. They can stay the same, which is our recommendation for this year. But adult meal prices must be looked at every year, and there's a calculator which you have included there. Method two is the method we are required to use because we do have free breakfast at our elementary schools. So this year, when you, when you put all the numbers into there, we're looking at a 23-24 rate of $4.70 for an adult lunch, which is a 55-cent increase from last year, and $3.10 for adult breakfast, which is a 30-cent increase from the prior year.
About how many adult meals can we serve in a year? A thousand, a little over a thousand?
Yeah, maybe 1,500 at the most. There's not a whole lot.
Out of the, I mean, we serve 3,000 meals daily.
A day, yeah. So, yeah, it's not a whole lot.
The adult meals are for?
Any adult that would come in and go through the line, it could be a teacher.
So teachers, administrators, parents.
Off-campus people come in?
We do not. Every now and then, we'll have some different food trucks come out, but we don't.
Parents want to come in or something with their kids, or is it mainly staff?
We do that, majority of the staff.
Majority, okay.
They go, they go through the line because they, either the cafeteria serving them like pizza on Fridays, you got a little of that.
Some pasta, something they had down here the other day that smelled really good.
So a lot, most of us teach.
All right, any questions?
Do they get the same portion, or they begin the same part?
It's a little bit, it's a little bit bigger portion.
Same burger.
Not always.
Same burger, more tots.
Okay.
If there are no questions, administration recommends the board approve the adult meal prices for the 23-24 school year as presented.
Mr. President, move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Wood makes the recommendation accepted, and we have a second from Ms. Reed. All right, any further questions? All right. Accept the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand.
Before you sit down, I just want to congratulate this, this young lady did a, she did the Tower of America.
I climbed the tower this morning. I didn't climb the tower this morning.
So I'm just very proud of her, and that's a distinguished, I think she needs a round of applause.
Thank you.
We've got some stairs for you to walk. We want to see how you've done it.
So you know, they do have an elevator.
All right. Next will consider, yes, very much so. I did not do that. I had the opportunity to also join her. I did not join her today. Next will consider.
Might not have been here tonight.
That's correct. I probably would not have been here tonight. Next will consider approval of revisions to the 23-24 compensation plan presented by Ms. Stench.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Dr. Odom, Dr. Gilstrath, Board of Trustees. And no, I did not walk in these stairs. So add me to that list. So as you know, the Board of Trustees is required to approve the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan, on which y'all did in July, but any changes throughout the year, any additions or deletions or, or changes, we also bring for your approval as well. And so attached there, or linked, I should say, in your board books is the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan with some highlights, some yellows. Those are additions, blue, which would be a change in title, only not affecting the budget, and a strike through which would be totally removed. There are five updates that I'm going to be highlighting tonight, and only one is a true addition. So if we begin on page six, that's the clerical and paraprofessional pay scale, we are sort of flip-flopping two positions. Under pay grade five, the business office specialist would have an increase in allocation to two, there's only currently one person in that position, and we would be deleting the secretary child nutrition. So that's just basically a swap of positions. And also under that child nutrition area on page seven, it's the business office supervisor, that person left that position, and so Ms. Angell and her department decided that this is a good time to make some changes that were needed, and we will retitle that position the child nutrition specialist. And that position that was deleted, the business office supervisor, that was locally funded, and this child nutrition specialist will be 100% 240 funded, which is our child nutrition money. So that's saving that salary and taking it out now out of child nutrition. So if you move down to pay grade four, that would be the only true additional position that we're presenting tonight, and that would be a coordinator for the special education department. As you know, our special ed needs just keep growing and growing, and Ms. Camp Two and her department have brought in additional revenue through their, the SHARs money, and we're proposing this position to help her department that's very needed with the scheduling and all the legalities that this special ed are doing right now. So that would be the, an additional position which we would, if approved, we would post for and look for a qualified applicant. On page eight, in blue, this position, Mr. Urbansik held, he recently left the district, and that was our coordinator of technology position. It's just an update to that position to make it more marketable with our, the, our other market groups. It's not a change in pay, it's not a change in pay grade, but we are changing the title to, from coordinator to director. And on page 11, page 11, highlighted under non-professional, so this would affect our bus drivers and bus monitors. So currently, all of our bus drivers and bus monitors just receive five state, state days that they can use for absences. So our proposal is for those five state days and to also give them five local days. So that would have 10 total days, so five additional days that they would be able to use for absences or for personal use during the year, and we see this as a, as a great benefit to our transportation department. That can really help them and their families out. And lastly, to the stipends page on page 12, so it's very small print.
Very small.
I know I need glasses. So the two strike throughs are for positions that are not being filled right now, or stipends that are not being received right now, for a sped, an e-fed trainer and an SLP lead supervisor. So we would be deleting those two stipends, and I think that comes out to about $14,000 in stipends that we would be, we would be cutting. And the stipends that we would be proposing tonight are a, an incentive, a three-year incentive and a recommitment for, so that would be, incentive would be for new employees. And we're talking about the SLP, the speech-language pathologist, the DIACS, and the S, the LSSPs, so those three positions. So this would be, the current people that we have employed in those positions, it would be a $3,500 stipend over three years. They would sign a contract addendum saying that they agree to recommit for three more years to the district. And for our new employees, or we are, we are advertising currently for SLPs, LSSPs, and DIACS. Those three positions, probably every single school district in the state of Texas has posted for openings right now. They are very, very in high demand and in high need. We are trying to be competitive in the market and to attract qualified applicants and hopefully maybe ease up on our contracting out of those positions because they are much more expensive to contract out. So it would be a recommitment and a incentive stipend of three times 3,500, three years times 3,500.
That's 3,500 a year?
Yes, sir. Are there any questions about those five updates to the compensation manual?
Can you just clarify one more time the difference between the coordinator and the director, or the change in the technology title?
Oh, so it's just a change in title only. Basically, this position for us has, was doing the job of a director, and to compete with our market, when we advertise as a, as a coordinator of technology, that's not what other districts call that position, and so it's hard to be competitive and to, to attract and employ from another district or from the technology world. So we're kind of just updating that position to the title that it, to the market title that everybody else is calling it, but it's the same pay grade and same pay, and it's, and there's no change in the actual job description either.
So whenever we looked at director, multiple directors in that pay grade, and so I'm not sure why it was a technology coordinator and not a director from the get-go, obviously was not part of that discussion, but since I've been here, it's, it's been something that we've talked about and looked at because it's falling under the director's position. And they are directing some campus principals and things like that, and how, how we want to coordinate technology. So in order to be competitive, I did talk to Mr. Urbansik about this. Whenever he left, I had that conversation with him, and so he did that, he felt, he agreed, he thought, yep, it really needs to be a director's job.
We can hold him to the standard, like, I guess, the same thing compared him to band director, athletic director.
I'm not sure, well, who else is in that pay grade? I don't have my company with.
When do we go and look?
Band director, maintenance director, the transportation, transportation director, similar.
Right, yeah, similar.
So it'll still be the same pay grade?
Band, maintenance, and transportation are all that same. Are there any other questions? So if there are no further questions, administration recommends the board approve the revisions to the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan as presented.
Do we have a motion to accept?
I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Clear makes a motion to accept, and Mr. Shaw, one second. Any further questions? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand. Opposed, motion.
Thank you.
At times, consider approval of certification of unopposed candidates for the FISD Board of Trustees, single-member District Three, and the cancellation of the November 7, 2023 trustee election for single-member District Three, presented by Mr. Shaw.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Superintendent of Schools, Board President, and Board of Trustees. The district only received one application for a place on the ballot for single-member District Three, the general election for the upcoming FISD trustee election. As a result, the district may cancel this election scheduled for November 7 of 2023. The district has prepared a certification of unopposed status for the candidate that submitted an application for a place on the ballot. The board will need to accept this certification through the approval of the attached order, I think y'all have in front of you. The order will then be placed on the door of each ballot location during early voting and on Election Day. Are there any questions? If no questions, administration recommends the board approve the order canceling the November 7, 2023 election for single-member District Three, and accept the certification of unopposed status for Ms. Liana Martinez, District Three, as presented.
Mr. President, I move to accept the administration's recommendation.
I second this.
Second. On the read, okay. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of accepting the administration's recommendation, let me know by raising your hand.
I'm asking.
Yes.
I'm like, I'm like.
Much appreciated.
I canceled it.
God, I'm like.
Thank you.
The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0074 personnel and 551.0076 and 551.009, deliberation regarding securities and devices, our security audits at 8:19 PM. Nobody will take place in the closed session. The action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed session will take place after the board reconvenes the open meeting. Thank you. All right, the board will now reconvene to open session at 9:41 PM. All right, the board will now reconvene to open session at 9:41 PM. We've not concluded our agenda for this meeting, is there any further business?
No, sir.
Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned at 9:41 PM.
Okay.